Good afternoon, it's three P M and I'll call to order the Board of Directors regular meeting study session for Thursday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty four. May I have a roll call, please?
Director Meyer Hoffman. Director Duff.
Present.
Director Martin.
Here.
Vice President Griffith.
Present.
President Sewell.
Here.
Thank you, we have corn.
Seeing all five directors are here, we'll skip item three. We'll actually be heading into closed session uh prior to our regular session today. Counselor, could you state the items we'll be discussing in closed session?
Yes, item number four is conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, D one and D four. One case Mission Springs Water District versus Desert Water Agency at all case numbers listed in the agenda. And then item number five, conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, D four.
Thank you.
And that that last one um potentially two cases. Thanks.
And we'll head into closed session, thank you. We'll reconvene into regular session. Item six, counselor, can you report on action taken during closed session?
Yes, the board met in closed session. Item number four was conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, D one and D four. And there was, and this involves uh Mission Springs Water District versus Desert Water Agency, there was reportable action taken in closed session. And there was a decision to seek uh review by the California Supreme Court, uh the appellate court's ruling in that case. And the vote was um yes in favor of seeking review by President Sewell. The the vote by Vice President Griffith was uh no. The vote by Director Duff was no, the vote by Director Martin was yes. And the vote by Director Meyer Hoffman was yes to seek review, so there were three votes in favor of seeking review. Item number five was conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, D four, and there was no reportable action taken on that.
Thank you, and I do just wanna make a quick apology if we have any of the members of the public present um that were doing our meeting with closed session first this month, uh so sorry if that uh delayed you. But uh item seven, rules of procedure, counselor?
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the Board of Directors, all noticed meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the board. The president of the board presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The president is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the president. No member of the board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a board meeting, and the board president regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item.
Thank you. Item eight, public input, this is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wishing to dress- address the board?
President Sewell, there's no members of the public on the line.
Seeing none in the room, we'll move on. Item nine will skip for today, that'll be on Monday. And action items, item ten. The public hearing will be on Monday, but this item is resolution two thousand twenty four dash zero six to collect sewer fees on the tax roll. It is recommended that resolution two thousand twenty four dash zero six be adopted, electing to collect sewer user fees on the tax roll under California Health and Safety Code fifty four seventy. General Manager, staff reports.
Uh thank you, President Sewell, uh as you know, typically this the public hearing will be on Monday, so typically we also give our staff report on on Monday as well. As it then would be read into the record, however, if there's anything that Arturo would like to present, or if there's any questions from the board, we can do those under the study session.
Anything for the board?
Are you good for Monday too?
We've been looking at this for a while, coming in around eighty thousand taxes. We could save that money. That came up about a year ago.
We do it every year.
I'm opposed to put that. Which many people in jeopardy of losing their house because they they got so much fire.
And just uh some housekeeping, do we have any members of the public wishing to address the board on this item?
President Sewell, there is not.
Alright, close the public. Um moving on, item eleven. Receive, receive and file the Mission Creek Sub Basin Annual Report for Water Year two thousand twenty two, twenty three. It is recommended to receive and file the Mission Creek Sub Basin Annual Report for Water Year two thousand twenty two, twenty three, prepared by the Coachella Valley Water District, Desert Water Agency, and Mission Springs Water District by W S P, U S A Environmental and Infrastructure Incorporated. General Manager.
Uh yes, President Sewell, thank you so much. Uh our consultant, uh W S P Environmental Infrastructure, specifically Rick Reese was not available to present today, but he will be on Monday, however, I did wanna pick, pull up a quick couple of slides. Uh as you know, uh last year in the staff report, it talks about that we were we pumped more water out of the basin than we actually put in the basin. When you look at all the inflows and outflows, the current change in storage was a negative three hundred and forty one acre feet. Again, Rick will go over this on more detail on Monday, but the reason I'm bringing this, we do have a change in storage. Um the other, and I would like, if you have any questions that you would like specifically to ask Rick next week, please let me know and I'll try to get those for him, so I'll be more prepared. The next slide, I have received one question uh regarding how much water has been art- if they call it artificially recharged into the basin over the last twenty years. You go to the next slide, please. This was also from the report, it's figure seven point two. What you see here, you'll see a variety of different things, mountain recharge, artificial recharge, the cyan line, that's when they started using the replenishment ponds, so we do have that information in tabular form, I looked at the report, I could not find a tabular form of how much water each year. So I will get that, and that's one question, I'll make sure the Rick's prepared uh ready for that. When they talk about the cumulative storage change, you see that there is a positive the uh manchester line, and that's why usually we always told that they've over delivered, if you will, because it shows a positive change in storage. But this graph, it it does provide a lot of information about the runoff from the mountain recharge, the infiltration from applied water, the underflows to both the desert hot spring sub basin, the Garnet Hill, which is actually the Indio sub basin. Indio Hills is not the same as Indio sub basin, and that wasn't clear in some of the texts. Uh groundwater pumping, you see how it increased a lot in the early thou- two thousands, but now it's sort of leveled off, we're using less water. Just, this is a pretty powerful chart in what it provides, or provides, so if there's any questions regarding, again, let me know and I'll make sure Rick's ready for it. So with that, again, we'll continue this item on Monday.
Alright, thank you, any questions or comments today, Director Martin?
No.
Director Meyer. Director Duff.
I'll send you an email.
Thank you.
I have one, and I'm gonna repeat this on on Monday so that everyone is clear. In that, it seriously, uh if you read this report, it says that we have a change in storage or negative amount of three hundred and forty one acre feet, however, we were originally scheduled to receive seven thousand acre feet of recharge and we were shorted. Um I know that Hillary damaged the pond, but I wanna point out that we were short by one thousand seven hundred and twenty four, which had that been delivered, we would not be minus three forty one in this in this report, so I think it just uh stresses the importance that we receive regular deliveries, and I will pontificate more on that on Monday.
Just so we're clear, this report is just an annual report. Uh but Rick did also complete the bridge document and should be able to provide some more history. But I think what you're making reference to may be more appropriate to Desert Water Agency, and we still have follow up questions that they didn't answer from before, so we'll stick working on this.
That is, that is correct.
But Monday's a good opportunity.
That is correct, but
expert.
But just so you know, in the report, it does say minus three forty one.
Yes.
And we were short seventeen twenty four, had we got that.
Yes.
Report would be different, it would not be showing that we did, that we negated more than we got.
Absolutely.
Director Duff.
Just to to pile on, and that's if it was seven thousand. According to the calculations from what they took in, if we were to get eight percent of the hundred and ninety four thousand acre feet, or the one hundred thousand acre feet, we are actually more like missing three thousand from delivery, if you count the actual amount they received, so thank you, sorry.
And then further. And uh any public comment on this item?
No, President Sewell.
Thank you. Item twelve, authorization for purchase of equipment for the Nancy Wright Regional Water Reclamation Facility and augmentation of the capital budget. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to approve the purchase of equipment for the Nancy Wright Regional Water Reclamation Facility for a not to exceed amount of three hundred and thirty one thousand nine hundred and sixty six dollars and twenty two cents, and augment the capital budget to accommodate this expenditure.
Thank you, President Sewell, I will ask our Director of Operations Danny Friend to provide this report. Thank you, General Manager Macy, good afternoon, President Sewell, members of board, staff. I have a presentation just to get through some things I couldn't get on the staff report, so before we advance to the slides, uh one of the things that I think is worth mentioning is we haven't you're probably wondering why we haven't had something like this in front of the board. Um at least for the majority of the board. Uh as for the most part, uh once vehicles like these or equipment like this gets gets approved in our capital budget, um we haven't historically brought these to the board, so as part of some of the changes that we're making um with the board transparency and as far as consistency with our procurement po- policy, that's why you see that, you're gonna start seeing a lot of those going forward. Uh one of the other big changes is when we made a cha- a transition to our enterprise fleet. Uh they're not capital purchases, so that's why many of you that have been on this board for a long time may have not seen it, so especially the new ones. So with that, um it's like, so to, uh I'm sorry, the first one, if I may. So today's recommended action is to authorize the general manager to approve purchase of equipment for the Nancy Wright Regional Water Reclamation Facility uh for not to exceed amount of three hundred and thirty one, nine hundred and sixty six thousand and twenty two cents, and to accommodate this expenditure to do a budget transfer. Um the bottom of of the uh the staff report, it talks about fiscal impacts and and what would be done to create the capital expend- or capital job numbers would be a transfer from the existing regional plant. And the reason that a county would like to do that is so they can track those assets differently than the building and everything and the equipment on site. So so reasons for equipment purchase, uh with the construction of the plant coming to a completion here pretty close. Uh when that new plant's operational, of course, our staff needs to have equipment to be able to do uh the things that they typically do today at the Horton plant, um receiving deliveries, maintenance at the plant, uh moving bins that have grit and screenings into trucks that haul away sludge, maintenance and rehabilitation in the ponds. So uh the purchase of this equipment is essential for the efficient operation of the of the Nancy Wright, and that's one of the reasons why we are requesting that. With the earlier comment that I made, that you probably haven't seen that, it may seem really weird that I'm bringing the purchase, or the request to purchase of four pieces of equipment, but because it's tied to the plant, that's why. So some details. Um before I get into the details, I wanna talk a little bit about the state's purchasing program. And what is neat about is all the price quotes that we've that we're presenting today are received by the state's purchase program, which is that program holds hundreds of competitively solicited cooperative procurement agreements which allow county, city, special districts, uh education, other government entities to buy directly from suppliers. Um the district can choose from a wide array of products, services, and equipment, the state awards these contracts at industry level. And but they leverage them locally so that we can, we can use local outlets and vendors. The other part is the district benefits benefits from saving time and money, uh some of the savings are as high as thirty percent going through this program. Uh some people refer to as a government discount, but it's a, it's a, it's a lever- leveraged program, they have hundreds of contracts across the nation, so we've done that with almost every piece of equipment that we purchased. So first piece of equipment that's that's on the on the on the presentation day is a case, it's a five seventy M X T skip loader. Uh that piece of equipment is gonna be used uh for pond maintenance. Uh the picture that's actually uh in in the slide is a picture of the of an exact unit with an enclosed cab. Uh it was difficult finding some stock photos, but that actually is one, there's a lot of them out there with open cabs. So given the environment, dusty, windy, heat, so we get them in closed caps. These are three bids that we received, case. And I'm not gonna be able to read the actual totals in all right, well, I guess I can from the screen up here. We have that, uh there we go. So as you see on this, on the lower right hand part of the screen, the case five seventy. Uh it says M X T, it's it's actually, it's a, it's a there's a, you can add that to their list when you add several different uh components, there's the base model, and then we start adding different model, uh different pieces of equipment. The five N T E P turned into an M X T, so sorry for that. But we received three proposals, the Caterpillar being the highest at a hundred and forty two thousand eight forty two, John Deere two ten at a hundred and forty thousand, and the case coming in at a hundred and twenty three thousand. So that is why staff is recommending to make that purchase of the case. The next piece of equipment is a telehandler. Uh though, it it's essentially off with forklifts. When you look at it, it it's, the telehandler is a telescopic reach, and some of the issues that we found out cause when this original request was, it was nine pieces of equipment. It was pickup trucks, it was gators, it was a forklift, it was a a reach hall, it was a high, high lift. And because of the door height of the garage, we couldn't get, we can't get a standard forklift set. So we have one down here at the yard that we use, it's fairly new. So in order for us to use something like that, it's limited to five thousand pounds, we can get it to the door. We could use a pallet jack, like you see people use it in some of our our um local stores, but you can't lift it into like containment bins, you can't lift it on top of stacking, so then you have to take another piece, piece of equipment like a reach hall. So essentially what staff has done and and meeting with management is we have narrowed this down to the pieces of equipment that you see being presented today. But that is why we have a reach hall. Uh a piece of equipment like this has been used the entire time on the regional plant construction project. And we didn't realize what we would go through, to be honest. We reached out to the the company that um, well, we reached out to the state and found out from Caterpillar that they weren't gonna be producing them for sale for the next couple of years. So then we reached out to, and give me just a second here as I remember the name. Another company called J L G, and that was one of the companies that the contractor re- um recommended that we go out to. And when we reached out to them, they said uh they referred us to companies that only rent them, however, we found that we could purchase units that would could be as old as twenty fifteen. So with the with the fact that manufacturers were not making them for sale, but they were making them for rental yards, they were willing to sell the older models as as old as twenty fifteen. And the just the way the shape wasn't something that was consistent with the equipment that we buy. So then it took us to what was available. Uh the John Deere G L G E L H uh T H eight forty two, that's a mouthful. Uh it is a larger piece of equipment, has a capacity of eight thousand. Uh one of the things that not only did the contractor tell us, but some of the local vendors that if it says it can lift five thousand, uh don't trust it. If you need to live at five thousand, get something larger, so that's what we looked at, we looked at something uh at six thousand, but they were even farther, they were, the wait time on them, I believe, was in addition six months. So we stepped up to the eight thousand, they said honestly, you might be able to get seven thousand out of it. Which is good because one of the things that will be used for is when the lift station is around the corner off of twenty. Um at times, we have to set our skid mount pump there, and that comes in right at about five thousand, a little over five thousand pounds, and using our current forklift at the Dos Palmas Lift Station, it's been a little scary. So uh this will be a a much needed piece of equipment to be able to handle that safely, and make sure that we we take care of business. Uh the last item is is a a gator, it's it's a, it's a utility vehicle, uh we currently have two of them. Uh they're at the Horton plant. There's, there's been some advantages of them, we've been using them uh instead of pickup trucks to get around the plant, they get into areas that uh that 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 normal pickups can't get. Um not, not everywhere is is suitable for uh even if it has four wheel drive, a pickup truck. Um in this case, uh these two vehicles, we have, we had two options, we had the options of buying a diesel or electric, and we felt that electric would be even though they don't necessarily qualify for electrifying our fleet, they are a step towards that direction to kinda get used to that. And they are, they have, they, the current ones that we have have proven to be more efficient as far as fuel costs, they are more agile. Getting around the plant site itself is not that big of a deal, but when you leave that path, start doing perimeter checks, start doing security checks of the fencing, it is a big site. Uh just the Horton plant alone is thirty acres, and this project is 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 larger, so. Um with that, this isn't due to a shortage of manufacturing, this is to match uh existing, so this purchase would be a uh at a state's procurement program price, but it would be recommended that we do a single source or a sole source so that we can stay with the same manufacturer as what our staff is currently being using. And that's all I have to share.
Take it in, any questions, Director Martin?
Yeah, just more briefly, uh purchase of this new equipment and everything, does that come with the training for the operators and how it's keep properly be used or?
So uh yes and no, so uh the skip loader is is a case skip loader similar to the skip loader that we currently have. And the the uh the actual equipment users would be be able to step right into it, it's it's almost an identical piece of equipment. So they are receiving that training here and through J P I A, which is our our risk management. As far as the forklift and things of that nature, we do have, require them to be certified, and the good thing about the district is we've also did the train the trainers, so we have staff here that are actually trained to train staff. So uh here recently, we did the four staff members, because we ran across a problem where somebody was busy, a delivery got showed, you know, showed up and, hey, Billy, go over there and unload that truck, it's like, wow, I'm I'm not certified, so it's good, it's actually good, I'm glad that they're paying attention to that, and we have several members of our staff that have been certified. Uh the gators, it's it's essentially like driving a a vehicle, steering wheel, small, agile, so.
Okay, thank you.
Director Meyer.
Yes. The uh the last piece of equipment, I was gonna go back, gator, so that thirty thousand dollars, that's actually fifteen thousand for two come to thirty.
That's correct, I I apologize, I probably should have put the attachment to the stuff, which
The next thing is the uh teleham. Just seems like overkill from what you got. You get that type of forty for cargo container.
Um well, like I said, we've always trained our staff to make sure from, we remind them, we encourage them, use the right tool for the job, safety is a big deal, and as I shared earlier, an experience with uh something much smaller, uh that says it has the capacity to live the, lift that weight, it's not necessarily something we wanna do. That allows us also to be able to take it off of the pad and do different things that are like the gravel roadway or the pavement area, so they're they're they allow us to actually get into areas that we wouldn't normally be able to with a standard forklift, even a four wheel drive version. But one of the things I wanna remind you is, this one forklift would have been a forklift, a reach hall, pardon, let me get my notes. A scissor, uh if, a reach lift and a scissor lift is one of the things they're looking at doing, plus an actual forklift. And the uh telehandler is going to be able to to take care of all of that.
How will this replace this scissor lift?
Well, you can put the basket attachment that this one would come with, and you can come up and go.
You can attach a a basket to the, to the forklift here?
Yes, that they're designed for that.
I've never seen that before. But why would you need to get up that high?
Uh hopefully, if you haven't been to the to the plant recently, hopefully on the seventh or prior to that, we'll show you how high the scenes are. Uh one of the other things that's gonna be beneficial is this weight capacity, it's reached a a distance, allows us to get up on top of the S B R tanks. So something that hasn't been probably to everybody, everybody's uh uh that everybody knows is during the process that we're doing right now at the plant, they discovered there was an issue with some of the communications and also some of the motoring, and they used that onsite telehandler to go ahead and and crane it up, reach up to a higher, higher spot on that plant, so knowing what they can do, and so know what they can reach, it's, and it's an appropriate piece of equipment.
Next one is the uh case tractor. What's wrong with the two tractors we have now, the loaders?
So if you're making reference to the larger John Deere front end loader, and you're making reference to the cases, uh there's nothing wrong with them, in fact, uh one of them uh is that the case is gonna be replaced here with an A Q M D grant, um so it can meet the uh the carb rating of a tier four motor. But let's just say that that's changed out in a year from now. We have two different plants, we have three different plants, and and to be able to have somebody that has a class A to take that vehicle from one place to the next, to wait for it to to be available is not always a a good thing to do, especially with a first year startup in the plant, there's some things that we don't know what we we're gonna be doing with the operation of that plant. As far as the actual beds and the maintenance, that's what they, that's what they do. So to do that, uh several days a week, possibly, I mean, to do that several day, a few days a week and multiple days in a month, to to have that equipment go back and forth, it's just not an efficient process.
And all of our tractors have air conditioning in them right now, right, all our equipment?
Uh I don't know the answer to that, I believe one may not, but the majority is.
And then I see here on the uh operator. The equipment quote quote from uh case says here, mechanical suspension cloth seat with armless. What happened to the air ride on the seat?
You know, I I don't take that deep of a dive into that type of equipment list, it's
Hmm.
Um Mr. Jeff Nutters are are our operations superintendent, and he's also wears the hat of our fleet manager, and he's done that for close to eighteen years. And I trust his his value and his judgment in what we get, I know that one of the main reasons why we have enclosed cabs and why we have A C and some of the luxuries of these equipment, instead of getting beat down by the wind and the and the dust after year and year and the heat.
I understand that, we're just talking about this inside the cab with there.
I can only imagine that that seat's adequate. So I don't know, as much as I've also been around equipment, too many pieces of skip loaders at that size that has an air seat.
Really?
Yeah, I don't know, I've only have thirty years' experience, but I'll, I I'm not sure. Too many of them.
Well, I would rather see it a a a nicer seat for him to sit on after four or five hours on that, in that side of that thing. You're you're working up your back and you
I'll definitely pass that message on to staff, doesn't it, you care, if we can do that within the same price, and if the board chooses to uh to pass this action on Monday, we'll see what we can do.
I would appreciate if you looked into that for the you know, you sit in there every day for a while, and you get older and it starts to wear on you.
That's true.
I think it's, you know, and then we work my comp stuff, and you know, it it's just, I I think the seat, a more comfortable seat. Stay more alert, you don't get wore out, it's it's just a better all. I trust Jeff's judgment on this, but sometimes we forget about little things here and there. So I I would appreciate if you looked into that for
Definitely will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Duff.
Great presentation, I'm glad that we are fully uh outfitting our new plant so that we won't be on the roads disrupting traffic, moving our equipment from one to the other. And uh again, great presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Griffith.
Thank you.
Very detailed, thank you. Welcome. Item thirteen, adopt resolution two thousand twenty four dash zero seven and reclassify the government and public affairs manager position. It is recommended to adopt resolution two thousand twenty four dash zero seven It is recommended to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero seven, amending the employment classification plan for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four with the reclassification of the public affairs manager position. General Manager?
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. Uh, this item was, was, I guess, very quickly discussed uh, at our last meeting when we promoted the, at that time, the government and public affairs manager position to the A G M position, which left this position available. I am going to need, um, Marion to help me with a lot of other things and she's not going to be able to perform all of these duties in addition to that. So we had to find another, someone else to help her in the public affairs. Plus, we want to have a more visible, um, face in the community. We want to be out there more often. So adding to this staff, we think was in the right, was staying with our strategic plan. With that being said, we have some folks that are mass communicators, just recently got their degree. They had expressed desire in the past to possibly work with Marion on some things, and this was the opportunity to do that. So what we're doing is we're, we're, we're staying with the strategic plan. We're adding a position in outreach. We're basically downgrading the old position from a manager down to a specialist. If you look at our salary matrix, that takes it from a range twenty-two to a fifteen. Each one of those steps is about five percent. So it's roughly thirty-five, thirty-five percent less. And depending on what step you're looking at and what the benefit package is for each, you're looking at thirty-five thousand dollars savings by doing this action. And it also allows someone to basically follow what they went to school for, which I think is a good thing. We like to try to try to, uh, work with folks to make sure that they see their dreams, that they have passion about what they do. This allows us to do that as well. So it's one of those things with a strategic plan and the staff we have on hand, it's sort of, it, it dovetails well together and it gives additional um, help to Marion as she moves up and helps me with other things. Is there anything you'd like to add, Marion? I know, uh, Oriana is also, uh, on the, available as well if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you. Director Duff, any questions? Vice President Griffith?
None. Good job.
Director Martin?
Nothing.
Director Maya?
Yes, I'm all for, uh, you know, hiring people just got out of college, but when we training people now? I, I, you know, we pay we pay good. We need to get people with experience.
I think I'd be very happy once this position is approved.
I, I, I'm don't agree with you. I think that first, we gotta give the person the chance, but I'm just saying that you come out of college, sure, you expect to get a job. But what is really going on here with the government affairs and, and, and that I, I don't know. I was hoping that when, to be honest with you, General Manager Macy, when you were the Assistant General Manager and Mr. Wallen retired, I wanted you to stay the Assistant General Manager because you really do know what you're talking about when it comes to work. I wanted a, somebody to come in here temporarily, an interim manager to look over all of the different areas because we've been under the same thing here for twenty years. To leadership, the same deal for twenty years. So we never really had a chance to ever look at everything. And this is a time now that we can take a look at this. What are we doing here with public affairs, government affairs? How much money we're spending? Where's being spent at? And whoever you hire is up to you. But that's why, that's why I'm at.
And I'll just say, uh, I disagree with that. I think, uh, we just spent, uh, six months or so on a very detailed strategic plan. And this, in my opinion, falls directly in line with a lot of what we've already discussed, so. Yep, uh, Vice President.
This is, this is actually just an internal reorganization. It's not a new hire off the street. It's so it's someone who's been here for a while and then also went and got her degree to move up within. So.
One of our employees already.
One of our employees already. It's not a new hire off the street, so. So I just wanted to clarify.
Already working here. Yeah, I, I have no idea. There's nothing here. Nobody said anything. Thank you for clarifying that. We, I don't know, I, I, I we can always disagree. That's okay. Thank you.
Anything further? And do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on item thirteen?
No, President Sewell.
Thank you. Item fourteen, award of contract to A E Comm for assessment district number eighteen, area D three sanitary sewer design services. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to negotiate and execute a contract with A E Comm Technical Services Incorporated for repackaging of the plans and specifications for the A D eighteen area, D three, where project sewer construction project for a total amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. I will ask our engineering manager, Eric Watt, to give this presentation. Eric?
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Item fourteen of this afternoon's agenda pertains to awarding a contract to A E Comm for design of, uh, assessment district number eighteen, specifically area D three for sanitary sewer services. Now this slide here is just to provide you some context and some background of what area D is is, uh, the blue area here would be area D one. And that was completed back in two thousand thirteen. This red area here as well as here is area D two. And it was completed in, uh, two thousand sixteen. This yellow area here is area D three, which is this. It's a blow up of that there. So design of area D three would include, uh, the design of of about a forty-six hundred linear feet of sewer main and the connection of over one hundred properties. This design project will complete a fine, the final portion of area D as part of assessment district number eighteen. This contract with A E Comm is necessary to take the existing plans that have been previously designed and will update them to reflect new sewer standards as well as recent utility installation from other utilities in the project area. From a timeline perspective, assuming the board approves this contract with A E Comm on Monday, they will begin immediately starting work with the anticipated, uh, design completion of August of two thousand twenty-four this year. And with that, we estimate the construction should begin starting by December of this year. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Uh, any questions, Director Martin? Director Maya? Director Duff? Vice President Griffith? And I have nothing further. Thank you, Eric. And do we have, uh, any members of the public wishing to speak on item fourteen?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item fifteen, award of on-call general engineering services contract amendment number one for the preparation of a water supply assessment and water supply verification for project Viento development. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to execute a contract amendment with T K E Engineering Incorporated for the preparation of a water supply assessment and water supply verification for the Viento development project in the amount of twenty-one thousand forty dollars. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. Um, before I hand it off to our manager of engineering, I'd like to, um, allow Mike Thornton, the owner of T K E, who, who was here tonight to answer any questions regarding, uh, the project, his company or anything like that. I know that to date, he has not been present during, I think, at least three of you. This is his first time being here because he has trusted his staff, Steve and Terry, to take on most of those responsibilities. But he was available this evening and Mike, thank you for attending today's meeting.
All right. Good evening. Good evening. It's really close, isn't it? So, um, this, the purpose of coming tonight is just to introduce myself more than anything else. Board has changed quite a bit over the years. Um, I think when I started, Mr. Martin was on the board. And I think he's the last surviving member of the board when I started working with the district. Um, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about myself and my work, uh, with the district. Um, the district has done some amazing, amazing things. I I have another client that I'm not going to name because when I compare it to the district, it is not attractive for them. But what they have septic to sewer challenges, eighty percent of their service area is on septic systems. They started an effort similar to your effort a little bit after you, maybe eight or ten years. They have converted zero septic systems compared to what you've done. So it's pretty amazing, the accomplishments that the district has made over the years. And staff together with the board. Leadership deserves to be recognized for that. Uh, I know there's been concerns about T K E services. And I wanted to come today to say I am ready to address those concerns. As you bring those to our attention, we will make sure that you get the answers that you need. And we are here as we have historically to meet the district's needs as they come up. The, uh, the item that's on the agenda tonight, two firms were asked. We were the only one that responded. The purpose of responding is because we're here to meet the district's needs. I know there, one last item I'm going to state here because, um, former president always told me to keep it short. Um, Mr. Martin would say I always spoke too long, uh, but I will just add one last thing. Um, I know that the payment from the state related to the plant has been slow. Um, we have an opportunity tomorrow. Um, Assembly Member Wallace is here to tour our plant. And I think it's a good time to bug in his ear and say your employees aren't doing their job in Sacramento and we need help. We've had, we've reached out to resident of the state water board in the past. I think Brian actually did this. Said, hey, we need to get some things done. Weeks later, a lot of things were done because he, he had the right conversation at the right time. And tomorrow may be an opportunity to have that right conversation to help get some money freed up. So, um, I would just say this to the Assembly Member, and I do know him, I could speak to him offline. Um, this district cannot afford that carrying such a burden. We are a small district. The state needs to do its job and release those funds. And I will be available afterwards for any questions. Um, and we'll turn it over to the engineering department to, to explain this particular area. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, man.
Eric, go ahead with your presentation. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Item fifteen of this afternoon's agenda pertains to awarding a contract amendment with T K E Engineering for the preparation of a water supply assessment for project Viento. To serve as some background where significant development projects are contemplated and, uh, the preliminary and, and during the preliminary, um, entitlement process through the land use agency, which in this case is the city of Desert Hot Springs. A W S A and W S V are required to be prepared pursuant to Senate Bill six ten and Senate Bill two two one. Um, a W S A is, uh, a water supply assessment and a W S V is a water supply verification. Now, the proposed, uh, Viento project will develop over one hundred acres located on the north side of Twentieth Avenue, just west of the new Nancy Wright Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility. It will consist of about six hundred and thirty thousand square feet of floor space. What triggers the preparation of a W S A is the size of the development project. And given that the proposed development project is more than the two hundred and fifty thousand square foot threshold, a W S A is required. So staff reached out to M S A Engineering and T K E Engineering to prepare the W S A for the, uh, Viento Development Project. M S A did not respond back to staff by the deadline that we set. And T K E did, uh, D K E did respond to provide a quote for twenty-one thousand and forty dollars to prepare the W S A. Given the scope of the project, uh, staff will review the W S A. Secondly, to be clear, there's no district monies that are being spent on the prepar, preparation of this W S A for the Viento project since the, since the developer provided the district with a deposit to cover the cost of preparation as well as our staff time in reviewing it. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Any questions, Director Duff?
Thank you. Um, quick question, actually. I'm trying to understand the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract limit for this on-call contract service and then adding the twenty-one thousand to it for the two hundred and seventy-one. Is that because the contract awarded to T K E in July has been fully utilized? The two hundred and fifty has been completely spent?
It will be. They are currently working on uh, the N two waterline project that was under their, uh, on-call contract. And, uh, that fell within the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold. Uh, by this twenty-one thousand and forty dollars, it will put them over. And so we wanted to get ahead of that and, uh, present this to the board. Likewise, they were also, they also, um, assisted staff here and they have, uh, inspectors. And they, those inspectors were, uh, inspecting a, uh, development project off a palm for us. And, um, um, that's how, uh, that's where, uh, some of the, uh, on-call costs were, uh, used.
I know this might be a question hard for you to just answer off the top of your head, but could you give me an idea of how many on-call contracts the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was able to fund?
We, we can do that, Director. Uh, I don't, I want to make sure it's, I know what you're asking for.
And I understand.
Yeah, I know.
Being covered by, I'm just trying to understand why, if it's being covered by someone else, we have to amend the budget. And then I wanted, I didn't recall that the two hundred and fifty was already spent.
And what we'll do.
I was trying to get a better.
What we'll prepare between now and Monday is we will show the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, how much we have spent and what projects we or task orders we've given T K E to complete those, that work. And then that will total the two hundred and fifty and why we're bringing this item back to you because we're actually adding to that on-call service. And then we'll also explain why, when he answered, it will because we do know that there are other activities that are going to be completed in this fiscal year. So before we got there, we wanted to bring to you the amendment to get us to the entire contract.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you very much.
Vice President Griffith? Director Martin? Director Maya?
Yes. So as my understanding is that the, the developer, it says so right here, but the developer has deposited forty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Does the developer have any say as to who, I mean, sure, they could express their feelings and concerns to us, but this is really a decision made by M S W D.
Yes, it is the responsibility of the water agency, uh, by the Senate bill to to use one of their, and it also is a savings to the developer, especially in this particular project. Most of their consultants are from out of town. They're not familiar with our capabilities, uh, what, what is our threshold? How much can we support? We have that information. Uh, T K E's already done an, uh, a water supply assessment earlier this, this year. So they have a lot of the information already. So it's actually a savings to the developer, especially when they're coming from out of town.
My suggestion here is sometimes a, a few days can be a game changer for developers and contractors and that. So I believe, President Sewell, we have the, uh, the board that vote for this tonight. But I would, my recommendation, yeah? We, we voted for something on a study session in the past.
Yeah, it's, it's a, uh,
Well, the answer is no, that's okay. We can.
Yeah, I, I don't recommend it because it's a study session. And so normally we vote at the regular meeting on Monday and I'd recommend that you stick with that. If it was an exceptional, like emergency type situation or something where we made it clear in the agenda that we were going to be voting at the study session, then that would be different.
All right. I have no further questions.
Just one more thing. Uh, I know that Mike Thornton talked about how we reached out to the state water board. That was actually our Director Duff that actually had that conversation with him. And I know that it's only tentative right now, but if we are able to have our treatment plant opened on June seventh, he is scheduled to be here at that time as well. And hopefully, at that time, it's probably unlikely that they will be caught up in the redispersions, but he will actually see what we've paid for and they've reimbursed us for half of that, or whatever that number is. So yes, there is going to be some more opportunities to talk to the president of the board at that time as well. So again, Mike, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you, Eric and Mike for speaking. Oh, Director Duff, sorry.
You're not going anywhere though, are you? You're going to be here for the meeting? Okay, perfect. Then I'll save the other question I have for the next topic. Thank you.
And do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on item fifteen?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item sixteen. Item sixteen, award of contract Canyon Springs Enterprises for the well twenty-two rehabilitation and capital bud- budget augmentation. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to award a contract for the well twenty-two rehabilitation project to Canyon Springs Enterprises, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of one million three hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars plus a ten percent contingency totaling one million four hundred and sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seven dollars sixty cents. Augment the capital improvement budget amount to two million two hundred forty thousand for job number one-one-six-one-one and to do all things necessary to complete the project. General Manager.
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. This is a construction contract with item seventeen being the construction management of and inspection services for that contract. And I will allow uh, Engineering Manager Eric Webb to uh, provide a staff report and ask, answer any questions.
Thank you, General Manager Macy, and good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Uh, item sixteen of this afternoon's agenda pertains to awarding a construction contract to Canyon Springs Enterprises for the well twenty-two rehabilitation and capital project uh, capital budget augmentation. Due to pump failure and other uh, uh, well concerns, uh, well twenty-two was removed from service. The Water Production Department recently completed a downhole rehabilitation of the well, which included brushing and bailing and a chemical treatment of the well casing and filter pack. It also uh, replaced uh, some pumping equipment. And this work is already being completed and it's done. The second phase of this project involves the above-ground improvements to the well, which include uh, the well casing, um, um, the installation of new electrical systems and uh, installation, uh, removal and installation of a book, above-ground piping and a new uh, chlorine dosing building. All of the proposed work for this phase will be completed within the existing footprint of the site. At the February twenty twenty-three board meeting last year, the board approved resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three recommending approval of exemption of determination under the California Environmental Quality Act. So this project is environmentally cleared to proceed. Upon approval from the Board of Directors, uh, staff will process the agreement, insurance and bonds. And staff will also initiate a pre-construction meeting with the contractor to begin the material submittal review and approval process. The construction duration is expected to be a hundred and eighty consecutive calendar days. Staff has reviewed the contractor's qualifications and has determined that they are the lowest responsible bidder. Staff will recommend to the board on Monday that the construction contract for well twenty-two re- rehabilitation project will be approved and direct staff to proceed with executing the contract and start construction immediately. Uh, just to clarify, um, I wanted to say that the budget augmentation should be identified in the amount of six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I don't believe that was made clear in the staff report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Director Martin. Director Meyer.
Um, you know, I don't understand why we can't see some of these bids that are going out and coming back. Um, so I, I don't know if you're asking me, telling me, or I don't really have a choice here. This is what you guys brought. You've seen the other companies. We haven't seen anything.
Director, if I'm not mistaken, we have bid tab summary.
Yeah.
Did we?
And there's three bids in your packet.
Is it? I guess I missed it.
Page two twenty-two?
Yeah.
It, it's a spreadsheet.
I missed it. I.
That's okay.
Operating with one eye here when I was reading this, so. Okay. As long as we keep, keep getting, you know, the proper information, I'm fine. Thank you.
Director Duff, any questions?
I, I just have a clarification question. Um, the project was awarded a three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar grant. Is that a reimbursement grant? Did we already receive that money? It is in our account?
No, we didn't. No, it, it's, it's with the state. It's through, I believe, Prop one. And it's much like what we're doing with the regional plant. Once we spend it and we get it back. This is different than the agreement that we have currently with the regional plant, but it's still the same process for reimbursement. Once we spend the money, show the cost that we've incurred, then we'll get reimbursed.
Do we have to go through FBA's and all of those steps as well?
No, not on this particular one. It's a different process. It's a different process up until the reimbursement. The reimbursement is the same, but in this particular case, because it's going through round one, CVWD is actually the contract holder in this. And we're just a portion of that larger contract.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Vice President. And I have nothing further. Thank you very much, Eric. Any members of the public wishing to speak on item sixteen?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item seventeen, award of contract to M W H Constructors Incorporated for Construction Management and Inspection Services for well twenty-two rehabilitation. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to execute a contract agreement with M W H Constructors for an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars for construction management and inspection services for the well twenty-two rehabilitation. General Manager.
Thank you, President Sewell. Uh, our Engineering Manager Eric Webb, would you like to take this item?
Yes, sir. Thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Item seventeen of this uh, afternoon's agenda pertains to awarding a construction management and inspection contract to M W H Constructors for the well twenty-two rehabilitation project that I just spoke about earlier. Uh, presently, M S W D has M W H Constructors on call for construction management and inspection services. And for this project, uh, will include construction inspection, photographic documentation, as well as specialized inspections of the mechanical and electrical and instrumentation portions of the improvements. The cost associated with this action would be to award a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, uh, five hundred and seventy-three dollars to pay for uh, site construction management and inspection services by M W H. M W H is an established consulting and engineering uh, company. And is one of our on-call consultants that was selected through a competitive selection process last spring. Um, as a side note, the propose, I spoke to the uh, project manager at M W H and the proposed inspector uh, is a gentleman that I've spoken with uh, a few times in the past that has uh, gone from one company to this one. And his uh, specialty is this type of work. He's very competent, knowledgeable, and uh, personally, I look forward to working with him and learning a couple of things from him as well. Uh, with that, are there any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Director Duff?
Do we know how long this estimated project length is?
A hundred and eighty calendar days.
Okay.
However, I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, go ahead.
Um, it will be started and stopped. Presently, I believe the uh, well twenty-two is in production. And so what we, what, what we want to do is we want to get, start the project. That'll start the, the clock ticking. We'll uh, interface with the contractor. He'll submit his uh, material submittals and things like that. We'll review them. We'll approve them along with the help from M W H. And then once they're approved and ordered, the clock will stop. Then we'll wait for the stuff to come in because we're experienced, we've seen there's been some uh, delays, especially with uh, electrical and mechanical equipment. Once it all comes in and the contractor is ready to get going on it again, then we'll start the clock again, start it at the day that they left off. So contract time is a hundred and eighty calendar days, but it will stretch longer because there'll be a dead time between when we approve their um, material submittals and when they come in and when the contractor will begin work.
And during those stop times, do we have any kind of agreement in the contract as to how many meetings and how much work will be going on during that stop time? I didn't notice anything in there. I just want to ensure that we're not having, you know, half a dozen meetings a week during the stop time and then having to come back for a change to the bid.
Yes, this will not be another well forty-two. I think that's the question that you're actually asking.
Thank you.
Yes, and we've tried to learn from that and that's why Eric was so specific.
I'm very grateful.
How we've timed out the deliveries of the materials before they get started again.
Great work, great work. And then the last question I have about the inspection and management services, does this project require any kind of storm water pollution prevention plan? I didn't see any mention of that as being part of what's being looked at. I just want to make sure that if we're disturbing ground and, and we're going to have digging and construction going on, that we are setting that example as a water industry and making sure that we're meeting all of those necessary guidelines.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, item number two, uh, bid item number two of the contractor, it says uh, they're, they're uh, they put in a bid for SWP P P, which is a storm water pollution prevention plan.
That's it.
As well as best management practices and N P D E S requirements. They're being paid to do that work.
I missed it. Thank you so much. That's, I'm glad, I'm very glad. I like missing it, knowing you knew what you were doing. This was supposed to happen every time. So great job. Thank you so much.
Vice President. Director Martin, any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you very much, Eric. Any members of the public wishing to speak on item seventeen?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item eighteen, award contract amendment number three to West Yost for Horton Phase One Nitrogen Control Strategy Implementation. It is recommended that West Yost be awarded contract amendment number three to implement phase one of the work described in the Horton Wastewater Treatment Plant Nitrogen Control Strategy Technical Report approved by the Colorado River Regional Water Quality Control Board in September two thousand twenty-three. This will increase the contract amount to eighty-four thousand seven hundred dollars from one hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and six dollars to a new total of two hundred and sixty-six thousand six dollars. General Manager.
Thank you, President Sewell. Uh, as in the title, this is the contract amendment number three. The first contract was actually to help with our discharge requirements for the Wright facility. Uh, we had worked with West Yost on the salt nutrient management plan and other items uh, here in the valley, and they had helped us put together the first, basically negotiate with the regional board. The second amendment was once we were going through that process, we realized that then they were going to start looking at the requirements for the Horton plant. The Horton plant, we were in the process of negotiating that. That was amendment number one, which was actually to do a nitrogen study for that plant as well. So we were doing, we were doing a study for the right, then we were doing one for here, the Horton facility. Then we ran out of time because we were going back through the states, so that was the second amendment. So this third amendment, the reason it is, it's actually a new study and we're actually now doing the nitrogen study. The first was trying to come up and negotiate our well, water discharge permits. And actually that was new permits are the ones that then helped us establish the industrial discharge requirements that we just passed last month. So what this is, is they provided a str- uh, a nitrogen control uh, technical report. Uh, and that was based on our, again, our wastewater discharge requirements. And it was approved by the regional water, regional quality control board in September two thousand twenty-three. Uh, in accordance with that permit, a technical report uh, which had two key elements, a work plan to achieve efficient limitation of the total nitrogen at ten milligrams per liter or lower the treated wastewater discharge of the treatment plant to the percolation ponds. Uh, as we've always talked about, the regional board ratchets down the requirements, not necessarily increases them, trying to limit the degradation to the basin. This is part of that strategy. Uh, as we've talked about in the past, this nitrogen control strategy is really part, going to be part of the salt nutrient management plan. All of these plans are supposed to dovetail together and continue through almost uh, two thousand twenty-seven. And that's why the completion dates are all the same at that point. The salt nutrient management plan will then dictate some of the discharge permits across the entire basin. Uh, you've heard us talk about um, CVWD and their Worf ten, there is a support letter that they've asked for through the D B B A. It's all, we're all continuing to negotiate with the regional board what's best as far as a water quality management. This is our portion of that study as it relates to the Horton facility. That completes my, concludes my report.
Thank you. Director Martin, any questions? Director Meyer.
So this, M W H is the only one who did on this?
Uh, I believe this is the next item. This is the West Yost contract?
Eighteen, West Yost.
All right, thank you.
Director Duff?
Just a brief question and then a, a, a comment and then a statement. Uh, question is, what is our current nitrogen at Horton?
Right now it is a rolling average of ten milligrams per liter.
Okay, so right at.
They, they, when, when we um, when we received the permit in two thousand twenty-two, that's when they established the ten milligrams per limit. And then the, the other part of that was now start doing a study to see what your plant can actually achieve. Because when they were setting that in two thousand twenty-two, we were concerned that we couldn't meet that rolling average. We can meet it as a rolling average, but they were actually going to put that as a limit and we couldn't meet the limit. So they were, basically when we were going through the process, the board heard our concerns and said, okay, we'll turn that into a rolling limit. That way you can at least meet your permit, but then what can your system actually do or what necessary things would have to change or be upgraded so you could meet them on a consistent basis? So this study is part of that continuing evolution of what our permits will be in the next cycle.
Okay. And then on attachment A, their billing rate schedule, all of their billing rates say that it's the twenty twenty-two billing rate schedule and that it is from August first, two thousand twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. It's twenty twenty-four and I just want to make sure these rates are going to be our twenty twenty-four billable rates for this contract.
Uh, I will look into that. I know that, that we could, we included, as we've tried to do on contracts you haven't seen in the past, the earlier information. I'll go back and confirm that uh, it's not as part of amendment number three as one of those attachments and I'll, I'll bring that back on Monday.
Thank you. And then the last comment was just a, a comment for West Yost staff, if any of them are, are listening. Eric Catterett from West Yost was on my Aqua Sigma implementation call today. And I wanted to thank him on behalf of all of the smaller districts in making suggestions to D W R to facilitate an online system that would prevent the uploading of numerous and ominous reporting for Sigma to a, a centralized website that would be just an enter and push go. And I thought that was a great uh, suggestion, so I wanted to thank West Yost staff, Eric Catterett for that input. That's it. Thank you.
Vice President.
My laptop doesn't have a go button.
And I have nothing further. Uh, thank you, General Manager. Any members of the public wishing to speak on item eighteen?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item nineteen, award of professional services agreement for GeoViewer software subscription and support services for the Mission Springs Water District to Nobel Systems. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to execute a three-year contract for GeoViewer software subscription and support services for the Mission Springs Water District in the amount of sixty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars to Nobel Systems and authorize the general manager to do all things necessary to complete the project. General Manager.
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. Uh, before uh, Danny gets started with this particular item, I think there's a clarification on the last item that you'd like to make. Is the twenty that I received because I, it was not ten, it's twenty? No, that's okay. I'm sorry. Uh, correct. It's a rolling average of twenty. They wanted us to go to uh, monthly, so you, everything was correct except for that number and. I apologize. I apologize. Now please continue with the Nobel. And.
Thank you.
If I may, since we're in the uh, mode of apologizing, I did reach out to staff about the seat and we do have a equipment, a large loader that has an air ride seat. Uh, our smaller ones don't, but uh, uh, you're correct. And, and they do come with them. Always on the word and skip loader, so. But I still look into that response and I'll get back to you on Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Friend.
So today, we are asking the board for consideration to approve a three-year contract. Uh, we currently have that contract with, with Nobel Systems. They've been providing our GeoViewer and G I S services uh, actually since two thousand and four. We digitized our mapping system, just a funny story, yesterday in a supervisor's meeting. Water production supervisor Chad Finch said he ran across a map in his office when he was cleaning and it looked like an old set of blue lines and, and what is that? I said, those are, used to be our map system prior to two thousand and four. So when Nobel came along, they digitized all of our maps. You've seen us use exhibits in, in board meetings. Uh, some of those were up here today. Uh, that's all part of what Nobel provides. And this year and part, part of last year. And this year, and part, part of last year, uh, we made a campaign to deploy full GIS program. We've brought on Timmons Group. This week, the project team had a kickoff meeting, and just dealing with that group, what they bring to the table, it was impressive, the years of, of, of all the experience, so that project that has been presented to the board in the past has got a timely schedule, but just almost two years. And this contract today is to hopefully get us through that period. Even Timmons Group recommended that we continue that. If we were to stop, then we would pretty much go back to everything on paper, and that data would, uh, be a data gap that we wouldn't be able to get back, or man, we'd have to put back in. Uh, although, General Manager Mason and I aren't really impressed and, and want a three-year contract. Alright, but, uh, it started off as a five-year contract, and we're hopeful that, uh, we can still get this down to a two-year contract to meet the needs of the district. But, um, I didn't put together a presentation, I think, because I'm not sure we'll sell you on them. They are a good company. Unfortunately, we just outgrown them. Uh, they could provide us some of the things, but it would be custom off, one-off type deals that doesn't really meet the directions the district is going. And, um, I know, I know they're sad to see us, um, break that partnership, so, you know. I'm able to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Director Martin? Director Myahafi? Director Duff?
Thank you for your presentation or lack thereof. Um, and I did catch the out clause in the contract, so I'm good with everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President? Nothing further for me. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Any members of the public wishing to speak on item nineteen?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item twenty, discuss Riverside Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, election of two positions. It is recommended to consider the nominees for two Riverside Local Agency Formation Commission LAFCO positions for up for election and have the board president cast a vote for a regular special district member from the eastern region of the county and an alternate special district member countywide. And I had a quick question. Is this something we need to vote on? Just because, um, the deadline is Monday by five P M. So I'm just worried on if it's something we decide Monday, we might be too late.
Just get input from the board, then you make the decision. I'll give you a person.
Okay.
Can be wrong. I guess what we've done in the past.
It just consensus.
Works. If that's the way we've done it in the past, Russ, then that would work. If the board would give feedback to the president, then is that your recollection? It is, and I was also going to state that if there, if we come back on Monday at three o'clock, we do have the information, the nominee form to go ahead and submit before the five o'clock deadline. So even if we, that's why I wasn't concerned about timing. We could, we would have time on, or excuse me, on Monday to make sure to get the nomination fee, uh, form in. So I would, so I was thinking that we would make the decision on Monday and just discuss it today, but we can do that, too. We can move it up to the number one, and then we'll have, uh, we'll have one of our staff send it in. But you are correct, both of you, that in the past, it's been discussed on the dais, if somebody have a strong opinion, one way or the other, the candidate statements are in the, in the staff report. And then it is up to the president to make the decision of who, who the district votes for.
Um, do we have a staff report to go over today for the item?
Uh, the staff report is really what you read for all intents and purposes. The candidate statements are in there for both positions. Everything you see in that is from the LAFCO group. Uh, they sent all the information to, uh, Dory, and then we then formulated a staff report out of that, and as well as provided all this candidate statements and any comment letters of support for each state, uh, each candidate that we received.
Okay. Um, would the board like to discuss any today, or just go on Monday?
General.
Sure. Uh, would you like to start, Director Martin?
Yeah, okay. Uh, ge- in general, I, I'm not too familiar with it. In fact, I'm not familiar with any of the candidates, except perhaps one that which is named from, uh, um, Coachella Valley Water District. But I'm inclined to support a candidates who have a background in water and as opposed to the other special districts, et cetera, simply because certain issues concerning water come before LAFCO frequently. And it would be nice to have members of the board that have an experience in, in, in water, so that would be the only comment I'd make.
Anything for you, Director Martin? Myahafi, sorry. Director Duff?
I would agree with Director Martin, although I'm concerned that the name for the one may be a little skewed to not necessarily have an open mind for issues that we may have in the future, which concerns me. Um, and so, so I guess I would have to counter that argument in that is it better to have someone who knows nothing, who might be more open-minded to listen than to have someone who has an agenda? But I don't know. Who knows nothing about the water world is what I, let me clarify. I don't mean to any disrespect there whatsoever. Um, but yeah, I'm just trying to understand strategically for our district's benefit. Is it, in, in the one special district for the eastern, is it better to have someone in a local G, a local GSA in our district that may have an opinion that we may not agree with, if we needed their open mind? Just voicing an opinion.
Vice President?
Uh, I, I went to, um, speak of my ignorance, and so I have not really paid attention to anything that has come before LAFCO or any decisions, which uh, maybe probably should pay attention to that. So I can't say one way or another, who I think might be more qualified, because I've not looked at any of their decisions lately. Um, I will leave that to the president, so, and whatever feedback you get from others to make that decision.
Okay. Um, as far as the two candidates for the, uh, between Bruce and Costello, um, I'm familiar with both. Bruce, I know, is pretty involved. He's almost always at the CSDA conferences. Uh, I've met Costello, but I haven't seen him maybe as active in Aqua or different things like that. Um, but I guess, uh, over the weekend, if you want to read through their statements and, um, provide any more input, I'm open to it. As for the other, between those five names, um, I'm only familiar with the one, and that's Harvey Ryan, um, Elsinore Valley, but I've just seen him at Aqua before. I'm not really familiar. So look it over, over the weekend, and we will discuss a little more on Monday. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the board on item twenty?
No, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion items, I believe both of these we will discuss on Monday?
Yes.
Okay. So item twenty-one, Nancy Wright, Regional Water Reclamation Facility Update, and item twenty-two, Critical Services Center and Administrative Building Update will be on Monday. Consent agenda consists of item twenty-three, Approval of Minutes, and item twenty-four, Register of Demands. Would anyone like to pull any of those today to discuss? Director Duff?
Register of Demands, please.
Go ahead.
Um, I just have a few questions on one, one second. Can you refresh my memory on the project Downing Construction is working on for us?
Uh, that is the conveyance line?
Okay.
The, the force man and the sewer that goes down a little more on there.
Perfect, thank you. And then, um, also sorry, reading through my notes. Um, we, we had a main line break, I guess, that required our landscapers to remove a palm tree. Was that? Can, can I get some detail on that expense and on that break a little bit? Because I didn't hear anything about the rake and other reports.
Abs- absolutely. It's something that happened this month. That's why it may not have been included, included in the, uh, GM report. I Danny's prepared to talk about that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. So there were, there's been two incidents, and the one that's in the register this month is one that happened in Desert Grimace. And there was, uh, our, our water lines and sewer lines are in easement, and the, where the leak was is directly underneath. Staff met with onsite HOA, met with the property owner who was absentee, the person behind, and no, it's not my tree. No, it's not our tree. So in order for us to safely fix the water line, we had to take down the, the the palm tree that was there. And so they took it down to a safe point where we could then manually take the root ball, uh, excavate it, and then repair the leak. And without getting too, too far into this, you're going to probably have another one in the future register, man, because on Fourteenth Avenue, Fourteenth, uh, Street, uh, we had an opatama's tree that was very dangerous, and we had to do the same thing when it came in. So
And this is because the property owners are not taking responsibility for the plants they have on their property, or because?
Ultimately, yes. The, 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 the best way to say it is we have an easement for owning, operating, and maintaining our water line. We don't have an, an fee title. Easements are terrible. You've heard staff talk about prioritization and our master plan. And for that reason, um, floods that we recently had here on First Street today, uh, some of the houses have gone fencing and other improvements. We've had houses flooding out. Uh, older lines, undersized lines, trees, uh, dog feces. Unfortunately, it is, easements are, um, a challenge for the district. Uh, in the past, um, April Scott worked with code enforcement to try to help us, and we did make some headway. Unfortunately, we just didn't get on the way. As far as the trees go, there's a cost associated with it, so it's not right tree.
Right. I'd like to see us continue to work with the city and, and whatever is necessary to try and mitigate some of those expenses. And any, if it feels futile, then come back and let us know. But I'd like to see us try again to work with city staff in getting those areas cleaned up and holding those property owners responsible. Because ultimately, every rate payer in our city just had to pay for that, it's not my tree property owner who owned, owned that property, and we've all had to pay for that now. So, sorry for my soapbox, just
No, it, it's, it's a fantastic time, be- because currently staff's working with the director of Code Enforcement, Christina.
Yeah.
Uh, with, with, um, the cannabis compliance. So we would, we're continuing to, to work closely, so we'll bring that up. We're working with her to take care of the, um, homeless and campus on our properties near the solar.
Perfect.
So we've had a lot of face time. So it'll be a perfect opportunity to talk about that. And at the same time, hopefully, we can get the master plan completed and start getting, uh, funding for moving some of these areas out of there.
Absolutely.
That's the ultimate goal for the district.
Absolutely. And then you might be the same person who needs to answer this question. Uh, we paid Walter Motor and Controls for a motor repair. Was that on a pump on a vehicle? It was a fifteen thousand dollar motor repair, so it just kind of caught my attention.
So Walton Motors is one of our vendors that does motors only. Uh, this is a vertical turbine motor for Wal- twenty-one.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you so much. That's it.
Vice President? Thank you. Myahafi?
Twenty-one, Mr. Friend. No, I don't go anywhere. Um, the, this palm tree, was it in front of the house? Was it back in the alley?
Uh, the rear easement.
What?
The easement, the rear?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was in there, in the rear. So it could have been a volunteer seed that flew in or something. Nobody actually was landscaping in there, back there.
Um, it's, it's anything's possible. I, I'm likely twenty years, twenty plus years. Yeah, it was large, so
The, the reason why I ask this is because when I was a, uh, Parks Commissioner, it came up, who is responsible for the vegetation in the easement? Palm drive from the curb, already have that little thing there. Um, came up back then that the owner of the store, the property owner, was responsible for that space there. But if it's in the back there and the but the, the volunteer seed could have came in, but Director Duff said absolutely right. It, you know, who's, why should we be responsible covering all that?
Agreed. Unfortunately, it, it would be an emergency if, if it was under other circumstances. We likely would have pursued it further. Uh, we were going to go ahead and try to take care of it ourselves, but we just didn't have the reach to, to, to get to the high zone.
Now, see, I'd still submit the bill. Sorry for interrupting. I'd still submit the little property owner.
Um, now, I know if it's the root system, the trees in there, it'd be on the other side of their fence, and the root system runs into our lines, they're responsible for it.
We could probably talk about this for the next couple of hours.
Right there, might be able to tell you the same. I don't know. I'd like to hear what he has to say.
Are we drifting off the agenda here? Um,
No, this is the discussion item.
But it's the, it's the the warrant, it's, it's, it's the register of demands, the specific cost, not necessarily whether the easement is our requirement to maintain or things of that nature.
It's a study session, hasn't it? And we can ask each other questions, and we're a little bit off the agenda, but it's
You're looking at me, the attorneys over there. Yeah, we're just
You're the one talking.
We're, we're just drifting a little bit, so.
Alright.
Do you think the easements, uh, could be a item we discussed at an upcoming workshop?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're going to be bringing that back to you as we continue with the master plan and looking at the seven odd miles of rear easement water main that we have and trying to, um, come up with a plan to try to mitigate those as quickly as we can.
Alright. Thank you. Moving on to item twenty-five, directors' reports. Does anyone want to give the report today? Monday. Item twenty-six, general manager's report?
We will be giving that on Monday as well.
Alright. Item twenty-seven, district council comments?
Yes, mine's brief, so I'll do it today. Um, we continue to represent the ci- the, uh, district on the, uh, Mission Springs Water District versus DWA matter. We reported at a closed session today that we're going to seek review by the Supreme Court. Um, we also, um, as needed, assist the district on employment law matters, continue, uh, working with the district um, on acquisition of an easement from S C E, which will be coming to you on Monday for a public hearing. And then working with staff on updating some policies. Uh, in addition to that, working with, uh, district staff, mainly the general manager, on a duplication of service issue. And then, uh, as needed, providing advice on public contracting matters, and that's my report.
Thank you. Item twenty-eight, director's comments and requests for future agenda items. Director Martin?
Yes, I have one, one comment, and, and I would really like to, uh, compliment uh, Dory Petit for putting together this voluminous agenda item. I was watching her. I came into her office, uh, and, and was watching her go through, and for her to have to make copies of every page and put this in the binder and get it organized, really is a lot of work. And, uh, congratulations on doing a terrific job. I hope you don't, you don't have to go through this on a regular basis for you, but uh, anyway, good work.
Director Myahafi?
Yes, General Manager Mason, I've asked in the past about some safety issues on the other side. There was some PVC pipe and what goes on over there, and what is the district, uh, I would like to hear Monday, what the district plans on doing about issues that you and I have discussed before, about six months.
You can have my answer today. We have, we have looked at a lot of the cost, and we decided that we didn't want to put a lot of infrastructure or extra money into this facility, knowing that hopefully in the next eighteen months, we'll be moving down to the corporate yard.
But so if somebody trips over that and gets hurt, we'll just tell them what?
I'm
I want to leave these safety issues for another eighteen months?
I don't know that there is a safety issue.
Mr. Mason, we, you and I both went out there and we discussed it about right after you became the, the general manager. We went over next door, walked, walked out.
We did, and as I stated, the sidewalk does not extend to the areas that you were making reference to.
You do what's best for the district, and I'm going to do what's best for the customers.
I believe I do both. Thank you.
Director Duff?
I'm going to state my comments for Monday. Thank you.
Vice President?
Monday.
Ditto. And with that, meeting is adjourned.